Prosecution against Mr. Quoc, we will deal with this then. Doctor Helena Wong. Madam Deputy. I believe that this Employment Amendment Bill to extend the maternity leave is full of um um politics and this is a very good um textbook material um for um showing this. There are F T U members who took the floor to to say that the officials and talked to them in private um to the exclusion of the Democratic Party and they're claiming all the credits. We have to bear in mind that this paternity leave bill in an unprecedented way was um discussed at the Manpower Panel, this um should have been discussed at the um Bills Committee. The chairman of um the panel uh was um the F T U's Jonathan Hall and he stopped being legal member at towards the end of this bill scrutiny, he gave up the council, he jettisoned the council, he jettisoned this um Employment Amendment Bill and he was elevated to become um the under secretary of um the uh S L W with the pay being doubled. Of um, we have four amendments and without a chairman here and we um ran the risk of not being able to to move them. Eventually, I wrote to the panel to to um reschedule the meeting and eventually we had a new chairman in the form of Mr. Vincent Cheng and he paid picked, he picked up the mess and and then we could move these amendments. If the F T U is so concerned about the pregnant women and the maternity leave as they say they are, he should have stayed long enough um till the end and the whole thing could have been, could have fallen by the wayside. As a member of the panel, I felt betrayed, the chairman did a runner, all of a sudden. Why didn't you say this? Why didn't you mention this? Mr. Vincent Vincent Cheng mentioned briefly the Manpower Panel and also the amendments that we sought to move, that he just picked up the mess, it was thrust into the position, he may not be fully aware of um the the picture, he mentioned only three. On the fifteenth of May twenty twenty, at the Manpower Panel, regarding Employment Amendment Bill twenty nineteen, we moved um certain amendments, there were four amendments altogether. For these four amendments, I mentioned um annual review um of um the cap of um the new maternity leave pay, second, the issue be brought into effect um on the day, and third reading was done, the government said that it won't be until the end of twenty twenty one uh that the the pay would be forthcoming. So the implementation period was so long that people were shaking their head, some said that um during the third, on the third reading, I hope that this will be endorsed today, that the the bill would be effective straight away. But the government disagreed. There were members, there was Dr. Fernando Zhou. Um, the cap um should be increased from three thirty six thousand eight hundred twenty two to one hundred thousand dollars. That was endorsed by the panel. Again, the government objected. And the fourth amendment is positive vetting versus negative vetting that we are debating uh today. Doctor Fernando Zhou has said that um by emotion, he said in the um in the Gazette, we should have a positive vetting of um the cap. Mr. Vincent Cheng, we have moved four amendments, but on the fifteenth of May, we submitted the amendments and then on the eighteenth, the Labour Department, the Commission of Labour Department wrote to us to say that amendments one, two, three and four do not um meet with um the government's support. And we went to the president of the council.
And then Andrew Leonard just across dot one, two, three, and then only four was um released, said that's the one proposed by you as well. Okay, now I'd like to turn to this, that's the one that was um consented by the president. Well, um, I'm no longer a teacher, but then in the past, when I was still a lecturer, I would explain to my students as to the difference between positive and negative vetting procedures. Well, usually uh for government bills, that would be passed up by this council via the negative vetting procedure, but then Fernando Zhou is proposing that on this um cap issue, we should go through the positive vetting procedure. Yes, of course, some members will still be able to move amendments and that would be done by way of resolution, so that's how for the cap for the additional M L P that can be amended via negative vetting procedure, but then if it was to be proposed by members to adjust the cap for the additional M L P when compared to the administration's proposal to amend the cap, then that would still have a charging effect. Just now, the F T U member took out the rules of procedure claiming that Helena Wong didn't know the procedures. In fact, if there is a charging effect, then the rules of procedure would have a specific requirement, that is thirty one one says that um well, the uh president or the um chairman of the uh committee stage uh would decide if there is anything that has a charging effect on the administration and if it has to be um paid for by the revenue or other public monies of Hong Kong, then it can only be proposed by the following um persons. One, the chief executive. So the chief executive can look at the four proposals and then she can then propose it or she can just take it over and propose them. In fact, we have asked her to come here to discuss with us the national security law, but then probably she has gone into hiding and therefore she has refused to do so. So she would never appear before us or she would just be talking to those who are in favor of the national security law or she would just appear when she was distributing the free face masks, but then she would never appear before us. Okay, B would be a designated public officer. And I believe that for maternity leave, uh it should have been the Secretary for Labour and Welfare, that's um Lord Chi Kwan and um he can propose it on our behalf and of course he has now uh proposed that it be changed from thirty six thousand dollars to about eighty thousand dollars and then it can also be a member if the chief executive consents in writing to the proposal. But then, and so if the C E also thinks that it's good to relax the cap, even if it uh has a charging effect, then if she says that Helena Wong can do it, then with her consent, then I can do it. And if she doesn't like the Democratic Party, I know she doesn't like the Democratic Party, she likes the F T U. So even if she was um abused by a swear word by a member of the F T U, still she favors the F T U. She could always ask Quok Wai Kung to move it, so if she consents, then Quok Wai Kung could have proposed it. So this is a policymaking process and the reason why it's so ugly right now, you can criticize members for moving any amendment that would have a charging effect. It's inconvenient because that would involve um a new charge on the administration, but then I think it's justified, then um the administration might say that, okay, I don't think you should move it and therefore you can discuss with the relevant Bills Committee and then it's proposed, it can be proposed by the administration, so long as there are four amendments, it's okay to us. But then upon receipt of the comments by the Bills Committee with regard to the uh several amendments and then after a couple of days, I after talking to the F T U, you said that you would not be permitted to move it and then if it's to be moved by the C E or Lord Chi Kwan or any designated member, then it's okay, but then have you approach us to discuss with us, but then you just said that um one, two, three would not be permitted. On the one hand, you said that they would not be permitted and then turning around, you said that it's okay, you have not been able to justify it, you have not been able to explain this. If you said that one, two, three are not okay, then you you should not have written to us, you should not have moved it. You should not have said that I, you you should have said that it cannot be proposed because it has a charging effect. Have you discussed with the panel? Have you discussed with us? Have you explained that to us? No. You just discussed everything behind closed doors, you don't, we don't know who you have approached. And then all of a sudden, you came back and you said that this cap could be adjusted and then you said that the cap could be set at eighty thousand dollars, there is no reason we would oppose you, but then uh we are against the way it was operated. We are against the fact that it was a a deal made behind closed doors, all right, the F T U said that well, they they did not approach the uh D P, but then they have approached, they had approached me, approached, they had approached us. So whoever is against the administration will not be approached, so it's not about having a charging effect, it's just that you're defending your own uh administrative approach, so long as you have prepared this dish, you will have to take it. So there is no need for any consultation, it's like the national security law. So you have written to us saying that we should not move these amendments, but then you just discussed this with somebody in private and then you said that it's okay. So what kind of political operation is that? We are also members of the panel and for those who moved the amendments, well, it was proposed by you and it was agreed by the Manpower Panel that the cap should be set at a hundred thousand dollars. So how come all of a sudden it became eighty thousand dollars and then they just trusted you and then they just claimed credit for it? So why did you not respect those who who had proposed this? I think these are the ugly things, so Vincent Cheng and also the F T U, whatever you said, I think these are the most ugly things. Because as a council, we have the rules of procedure here and if you think increasing the cap is justified, then you should not have written to us to tell us that it cannot be increased. Well, in fact, you claim that the administration has already uh agreed to increase the um uh M L P and it would be uh it would be funded by the administration and you think that that there should be a cap in order to avoid having extreme cases which might not be reasonable because that could also exceed a certain level. And then the administration should not use public money to take up these caps and you rejected our proposal to increase the cap and you did not allow us to move the resolution here on our own, but then all of a sudden you made a turnaround and then you change it to eighty thousand dollars. You did not tell us exactly how you decided to take on board the comments by members and you will have to explain it in your remarks later. So the D P has done its due diligence by scrutinizing the bill and we formally made those proposals at the Bills Committee and it was also approved by the Bills Com- by the panel, but then um you did not um agree to that and then all of a sudden you turn around, we don't know what happened. And then you did not allow us to move those amendments and then all of a sudden you moved the amendment yourself, that's the reason why I said it's ugly. I don't know, probably the F T U might have lobbied the Chief Executive and then the C E would tell the secretary that you would have to take on board those comments. So what's the version? What's what's the story? I think we have the right to know. Mr. Chen Hengpen. Thank you, Madam Deputy. Can you just um uh zoom on to Helena Wong, you said that the whole thing was really ugly, so you sounded very eloquent, but then I was worried because I think you might have suffered from mental disorder or you might have suffered from amnesia. Just a minute, just a minute. Chen Hengpen. Which part are you trying to clarify? I was worried that I am pointing my finger at those who are making such remarks, so I did not uh pinpoint at anybody, well, please stop first. It's offensive, it's offensive, Helena Wong, which word are you trying to clarify? I didn't hear it clearly. Well, he claimed that for those making remarks, we're making uh uh intuitive remarks, so I'd like him to clarify. So I did not say that they are making remark ridiculous remarks. In fact, I said that some members were making um disconnected remarks. Well, please be careful, please mind your language. Helena Wong, he also said that I was suffering from mental disorder and I think this is offensive and therefore I I urge the uh deputy to listen to the tapes. Uh, if she doesn't accept this and if um uh she find it offensive, then I would withdraw them first, I don't want to spend time on arguing with her. Well, just now Helena Wong might have forgotten something when she made certain remarks and just now I said that she might have suffered from mental disorder, okay, I'll change my wording. All right, you might have forgotten what happened and then in the process we would have seen that she felt uh be being betrayed, but then uh who betrayed the Hong Kong people? In the process of scrutinizing this bill, you can fully see this. Because the chairman of the Bills Committee, Mr. Ho Kai Ming, uh halfway through, uh he uh switched over and became an official and as a result of that, we were not able to continue with the scrutiny of the bill. And therefore, she said that we would be betrayed. In fact, the fact that we would, we did not have a chance to submit the bill before this council meeting and in the end, we might not have been able to pass it, that's because of the filibustering in the House Committee. For how long has it taken place? If we had not been able to go through the House Committee, then how would you have been able to move your amendments and when it comes to a sellout of Hong Kong people, who did that? Helena Wong? All right, you said that the decision-making process was very ugly, how ugly was it? Helena Wong, point of order, well, she was asking us who who betrayed Hong Kong people? Of course, it's it's you, the D A B, of course, it's you. You don't need to respond so quickly. Helena Wong, you will have to stop because it's not a time for you to argue with each other. Chen Hengpen, please continue. As I was continuing, Helena Wong was trying to interrupt, she was trying to barge in. And what I was was trying to tell you was that the scrutiny of this bill uh went through a lot of hiccups and twists and turns and then on the issue of passing the maternity leave legislation, we were already in the process of making amendments, as you can see it. Kenneth Lau. A quorum call, so Mr. Lau is claiming um a quorum call.
We have a quorum, please return to your seats. And please continue to speak, Mr. Ben Chan. Madam Deputy, I was interrupted three times within the two or three minutes speech made, but in fact, what everything I said is true because we see how unsightly it was throughout the process of the bill's scrutiny. Because we see how um the words of some members don't tally with the deeds. We're at the stage of debating on amendments, for example, the Commissioner for Labour can by notice publish in the Gazette. And then the uh proposed an amendment and then the amendment is the to move a resolution. Well, Dr. Helena Wong just now also admitted that this would create a charging effect and as such, it is impossible, it is inadmissible and even if you move this amendment, it is inadmissible and the government can reject it. And even if you move this amendment, it is inadmissible and the government can reject it. And according to the government, if the amendment is passed, it will withdraw the bill. And this is no difference than you burn, I burn, you burn with us. If the bill is withdrawn, public interest is undermined because instead of extending the ten-week ML to fourteen weeks, they now have nothing. And another amendment is to increase the cap of thirty-six thousand two hundred, eight hundred and twenty-two to eighty thousand dollars. The administration has incorporated our views in proposing the amendment. But if because of a hiccup, the bill is not passed and the bill is withdrawn, we find it really regrettable. We've made so much effort. And I'd like to tell the public about this. First, the House Committee did not return a chair and as a result, the bill could not be read and moved. And in the end, we adopted an alternative approach for the panel to discuss the bill for resumption of second reading to continue here. This is the only alternative for the bill to have a chance to be passed. I want people of Hong Kong to bear in mind how this bill is come by. Because some members may say that they've strived for the passage of the bill. You need to put this question to him. Well, the bill could not have been proposed. And I think we should take this opportunity to tell the public the truth. And yet with the burn with us members, they have tact. They always pretend to be righteous and standing on side of justice. But if they thought carefully, they would not have something like Mr. Leng Yuchong said yesterday. From Oriental Daily, let me quote this. Mr. Leng Yuchong criticized the government for abusing the procedure in this council and referred the bill directly to the panel on manpower for handling. And he questioned that there would be no more gatekeeping here. He also pointed out that in January, the Pan Democrats already put questions to the administration and supported the passage of the bill. They only, they were only opposed to how the bill was to be enacted. This is, I mean, what hypocrisy? Because according to his mentality, it is not right to handle the bill by the panel of manpower. The problem is, it is hypocritical. Because at the time, there was filibustering in the House Committee, they were playing a game. This game is called election of chairman. And if they continue to be mutually destructive at the House Committee, then the bill could never have been able to be tabled in the council again for debate here. Let alone the CSA's that were discussing. So Secretary at the time did not wait for House Committee to complete its saga. But had he done that, there would never be a chance for the bill to be discussed here. Please come back to the bill. So if we hadn't make every effort in ensuring the passage of the bill on ML, I believe that this bill would have been destroyed by them. So they're saying that, that they have done their part in safeguarding the interests, but I would say that instead of striving for better benefits, they're actually trying to destroy the bill. So they should not get on their feet and suggest that there is a procedural injustice, there is a wrongdoing. Because if there is any injustice, it's their fault because of the burn with us tactic that they use. Because in the end, the bill was referred to the panel on manpower instead of the House Committee. That's how ugly it became. Their deeds are not consistent with their words. Well, it's right for me to say that somebody is perhaps having psychosis. Otherwise, this person would not have jumped on his or her feet to say that there is no due process and everything is so ugly, etc. I need to level with the public that you should bear in mind if indeed the maternity leave period is extended, what happened in this council? And that the Legislative Council may by resolution amend the cap, it is not as, they put it, that they worked hard for it.
I go with C. Nothing can be further from the truth, as much as fact. In connection with the amendment moved by Mr. Cheng, it is unrealistic because if we move this, the administration will withdraw the bill. And if we move anything that will have a charging effect, they will not find this acceptable, so this is unrealistic. Why do we have to move it? The early history, I may not be known to you, and that's why they are fighting for it. Mr. Ray Chan said that there is a safety element here. If this amendment is carried, then it will be wholly unsafe. If they destroy a meeting and we cannot have the chairman of the House Committee, it would be impossible for us to move any amendments because they have ruined the House Committee. They talked about thirty-five plus, if they manage to have the majority here, they will object to everything. And you can expect them to move the amendments to fight for it. So it's not safe to put the power in their hands. By negative vetting, we can also move amendments within the twenty-eight days. If you move the amendments, if you carry the amendments, I would find this unsafe. Mr. Su Kajin. Thank you, Madame Lee. Thank you, Counselor Lee. I'd like to respond to some of the amendments first, and then I'll be moving on to others. Regarding the amendment to fourteen-seven, there's a question of positive vetting versus negative vetting. If we support a negative vetting, then we'll be giving the power to the government to pay the four weeks of maternity leave pay. The government said that if we do otherwise, they will consider withdrawing the entire bill. The government threatens this controversial bill and force our hands to agree with the negative vetting proposal. I find this wholly infuriating. Many pro-democracy members made it very clear what the problems are with regard to negative vetting. Like the maternity leave, the government owes the people of Hong Kong a lot. They have been dragging their feet for so long. With the negative vetting, definitely the government will be dragging their heels indefinitely. With regard to the four weeks of maternity, additional maternity leave, the government may take twenty years and not amend any further. Negative vetting and positive vetting means that we restore the power to the council so that we can fight for a better deal for the public. Under bicameral voting system, our power has been restrained considerably. The secretary is limiting the, what little power we have. And this is hegemony on the part of the executive. And this kind of hegemonic attitude should be condemned here. There are some members who are in support of negative vetting, I think this is mind-boggling. They are giving up all the power to scrutinize the bill and monitor the government. And this is an imbalance of power, and our power has been restrained drastically. And the pro-democracy members are handing over the power to the administration and they are defending, they're leaping to the defense of the administration. They're here in willing to press the button to be the rubber stamp. And they are being yes-men here in this council, and this is something that should be condemned. Why is it the government so insistent on negative vetting and threaten to withdraw the bill? Why do they have to alienate the public? The government owes us an explanation. Madam Deputy, I support the idea of positive vetting to defend our power and to stand up for the public. The government is proposing to increase the cap, and I support that also because this is going to be beneficial to a lot of women. And this will minimize the objection on the part of business community. The government objects to members' amendment and then they turn around moving the amendment. Dr. Helena Wong made it very clear that this is executive autocracy. Now, the proposal is to increase the maternity leave from ten weeks to fourteen. And there is going to be a cap on the maternity leave pay. And the pregnancy period of miscarriage will be reduced from twenty-eight weeks to twenty-four. All these I am in support. This bill will not only benefit the women population. I think we should look at this from macro social situation. I think this will make it fairer for the women. I think what we have to discuss today is not so much whether the four additional weeks would be long enough. Whether these would help the women to nurse themselves back to health. And also whether the maternity leave pay is an act of generosity. I think we ought to explore the social implications and how this would have a bearing on our society. Can we make society fairer or are we perpetuating the unfairness and injustice in the community? Now, under CDO, women are given the protection in the way of employment. It points out that everyone should have the right to work. And all kinds of discrimination against women at work should be eliminated. And they should enjoy the same right on equal footing with the male counterparts. Women should not be discriminated against because they get married or if they have children. And there should be assistance in a way of welfare services like childcare facilities so that the couples will be able to look after their family and take part in social activities. In the whole course of discussion, individual members said that the extension may affect women in a way that they may be discriminated against. Now, of course, the extension of maternity leave will enable women to have longer periods of recuperation. And they can focus their attention on their newborns. At the same time, I think we have to bear in mind that paternity leave only has only five days. How do we formulate the policy from the gender point of view? I am particularly concerned about the differential treatment for paternity leave and maternity leave. And I think there is very much the dichotomy of men being the breadwinner and women being the homemaker. It would be very, make it very difficult for women to join the workforce. I have to make it clear that I'm not suggesting that we should synchronize the paternity leave and the maternity leave. Because of the physical difference, and men and women are different, women suffers pain during labor. Men are only offering assistance on the side and making preparation. There is some physiological difference between men and women, we have different roles. And definitely, we do have different roles between men and women. While we acknowledge the physiological differences, we cannot ignore the differential between the paternity leave and the maternity leave. The government said that by extending the maternity leave to four, by four weeks, we are bringing ourselves in line with the ILO. Now, the ILO requires fourteen weeks. To what extent is it based on the need on the part of women to recuperate after childbirth? To what extent are they, is this a predicate on women having to breastfeed the babies? I don't think we should take the International Labor Convention out of context. Under the, the ILO also acknowledges that the paternity leave should be increased. I think the government is just turning a blind eye to it. Mr. Shi, please speak to the amendment. I think what you said just now is not entirely relevant to the paternity leave. What you said should have been said during the resumption debate. Well, I'm saying that if we talk about whether five days of paternity leave would be enough, and this is perpetuating the differential and highlighting the unequal, gender inequality in this regard. I will try to minimize my speech on paternity leave. The government is trying to extend the maternity leave, having regard to the ILO recommendation. They are using taxpayers' money to subsidize the proposal. I'm not sure whether the administration is also considering the relationship between paternity leave and maternity leave. And are they perpetuating the gender inequality? In twenty fifteen, the government has implemented a gender streaming checklist. When policies are formulated, the government should have regard to this checklist. I'm not sure what the results are. I think it is only the government who is aware of the situation. According to the ILO report on women employment in twenty eighteen, seventy-one percent of men are at work, forty-five percent of women are at work. This shows that seventy percent of the women are willing to work instead of staying at home. But they stand a lower chance by twenty-six percent of getting a job up to twenty eighteen. The difference has been narrowed by only two percent. So in the workplace, there is not much improvement in the gender equality. In twenty eighteen, six hundred and twenty thousand women are homemakers and only twenty thousand are men in the working population. Men are, represent sixty-eight percent, there is a difference of about twenty percent between men and women. It shows that there is a difference, differential between men and women. There are more men taking part in the workplace, and they are facing more burden than women. In terms of population policy, the government emphasizes that they are encouraging women to work. By extending the paternity leave, this is not a policy to encourage women to join the workforce. The secretary has clarified on this. Given the economic downturn, should the government encourage women to join the workforce? There are still question marks over it. If the government were to encourage women to join the workforce, they cannot ignore the dichotomy between men and women. Men do not have to be breadwinners, women do not have to be homemakers. I think we have to look at the burden on them before we can address the problem.
So they should be able to make their own choice. But then the current arrangement has totally ignored the relationship between paternity leave and maternity leave. In the long run, it's not going to do good to ensure gender equality. That's why the administration will have to do an overhaul of the situation instead of just doing this in a patchy manner. Because this is about our gender equality. I'd just like to mention that in the resumption of our second reading debate, many members have said that because of childcare need, they might not be, women might not be able to join the labour market because of a lack of childcare services. I agree that this is a very major obstacle because many families have not been able to have our domestic helpers. And yet, this is not enough to explain why the lack of childcare services would have anything to do with women instead of men. And therefore, obviously, this is again a gender mainstreaming issue. So it's not about the lack or sufficiency of services. So in extending the maternity leave arrangement, I hope that the administration would also be looking at the gender issue about the difference between maternity and paternity leave. Well, all I'm trying to say is that while we are arguing about the extension of maternity leave, whether or not the legislation will be passed, whether it's a hijacking or blackmailing or not, whether or not it's pragmatic or practicable and so on and so forth. So what I'd like to say is that while we are extending maternity leave, we are also extending the problem of gender inequality. We don't know. Madam Deputy, these are my remarks. Thank you. Once again, I'd like to remind members that we are debating on the Employment Amendment Bill twenty nineteen. This is the committee stage. We have already completed the second reading debate, and therefore I hope that you can focus on the amendments themselves. We still have a dozen or so members who would like to speak, and some have already spoken for the second or third time. So please focus on the amendments. Yes, Mister Stephen Ho. Thank you, Madam Deputy. After listening to Mister Chen Hengpen and also the argument that he engaged in with Helena Wong, I hope that for the Bernwoodas camp, well, in a moment, you'll be able to speak. And we understand that this is the election year ring period, but then whatever you do while you are running hot in your head, well, the basic law does say that fifty percent of the members have to be present in order to form a quorum, and even at committee stage, we need to have twenty members present. Yes, you have the right to call, to make a quorum call, but then I'm not suggesting that you should do it now. You should also respect the right of member to speak. It's like what Mister Shu Ka Chen said, or even Helena Wong. I did allow you to speak and complete your speech without interrupting. Because if you just keep interrupting, for example, if you just barge in while Mister Chen was just speaking into this third minute and twenty seven seconds, then you would be disrupting other people's right to speak. Well, just now Helena Wong said that, well, she would have submitted many amendments, but then they were all rejected by the president. So it shows that she was very hardworking and she was all for the improvement of the amendments which would extend maternity leave and also maternity leave pay. Apparently, she was working very hard. And of course, she just joined the primary, and of course, she would like to outperform others. But then, the reason why we are working on the thirteen areas and also the CSAs. Well, all along, we've been talking about things relating to this, but then where have they come from? Well, she said that her amendments had been rejected by the president. That's because it's against the basic law. Well, because the check has to be signed by the administration, but then you're suggesting that you should have the right to do so. And Fernando Zheng would also like to increase the cap to a hundred thousand dollars. It's not meaningful because that would have a charging effect, and there is no reason that it should be proposed by this council. But then at the Manpower Panel, one of the amendments that was approved was the one proposed by Vincent Cheng on behalf of the panel. That's the right to scrutinize the amendments. And that has nothing to do with the charging effect. And it's not like what Shu Ka Chen just said, it's about administrative hegemony. In fact, we should set it out very clearly. We have to clarify this because everything has to be in line or in compliance with the basic law. That's very clear. And you also talk about the fact that we have this resolution, and we also talk about the seventeen House Committee meetings which did not yield any effect. Well, the reason why it has to be discussed or scrutinized by the Manpower Panel, that's precisely because of the filibustering. We have to resort to those ways and means in order to complete the scrutiny. And we are trying to ensure that the administration will be able to implement the amendments. All right, whether or not it should be twenty eight weeks, shortening to being shortened to fourteen weeks or twenty four weeks. I'm not a medical expert, and then of course, I have no way to determine. And therefore, all I can do is to listen to the medical report to see if it's reasonable. And then the S R government told us that, well, financially, it's affordable. And then if it's affordable, then of course, we'll try to do more. And if the S R government told us that it's like the two dollar transport fare, all right, in two years is going to run out, and the money is going to run out, then everybody will have to take that into account. So we have to, it's a balancing exercise. So long as we have enough money to spend. If it's to be shortened to twenty two weeks instead of twenty four weeks, then we'll be prepared to go for it. But then the thing is, if you look at the CSAs and also the ensuing debates, many members try to claim credit. What are they trying to do? They all claim that this particular bill was the hard work of theirs instead of the others. So it's like Fernando Zheng. Okay, he said that he proposed a hundred thousand dollars. As I said, if I just ignore the basic law, then I'll be prepared to propose astronomical figures so that pregnant women will be able to get whatever they want. But that's not a reasonable way to act. So for the opposition camp, the Bernwoodme camp, that's what they are doing. So at the start of the meeting, okay, at the start of this term, we had the so-called pandemics. Actually, they said that it's not good to call them just pandemics. They said that they are not, they are the, they are not the loyalists. So even in the C S A, they are trying to try, they are trying to find room to suggest that it has nothing to do with the filibustering that they had done for the seventeen House Committee meetings. The fact that we had the following CSAs, they are trying to claim credit because initially, when they tried to filibuster the, at the H C meetings, there was no way for this bill to be, to go through the normal channel. That is, for a bills committee to be set up under the H C. So do they know what's meant by shame? So they are just shameless. You call us ugly. In fact, it's you who are ugly. Because according to the procedures, would we have had these CSAs here? Following the procedures of the H A, all right, the bureau director has been scratching his head. What's happening in this council? Too bad. This is a politicized legislature because they are actually hijacking people's livelihood, and they are trying to work in politics. So it's become the two. But then it's not like us. We hope that people's livelihood should be the priority. And we don't want to be forced into politics because we are trying to improve people's livelihood. That's our initial intention. That's very different from yours. Still, I hope that from time to time, you can make some suggestions which might have some merits, even if you have a malicious intent, even if you have gone down the evil route. All right, it's like another member who just stood up. Well, what he meant was that it's double standards. I don't want to call you mental disorder. Well, to them, it's normal. Well, once again, she is standing up. What's the point of order? I think Stephen Ho is second guessing people's or members' motivation. He said that members were speaking out of malicious intent. I think he's second guessing our intent. Mister Stephen Ho, had you second guessed, had you second guessed their intention, that they were speaking out of malicious intention or motivation? So what did I say to second guess or speculate or impute any improper motive behind their remarks? So that's the phenomenon of Helena Wong. We can call it Helena Wong phenomenon. So I'd like him to name names as to which member was speaking and trying to impute improper motive towards the others. Stephen Ho, did you impute any motive behind any members' remarks? Did you do so? Well, I was just referring to a phenomenon, that's double standard. And she thought it's okay to interrupt other people's remarks. I remember just a few minutes ago, Helena Wong said that we should not be interrupting when people were speaking. And then on two occasions, she did that. Would you call that, would you not call that double standards? So I, what was, Chen Hengpen said that she was suffering from mental disorder. But then she was trying to steal the limelight in this council. Probably, she was doing this for her election. If she did not rush out, if she did not behave in such a manner, then what's the justification for her to continue to stay here? Helena Wong, what are you trying to clarify? Well, just now Stephen Ho impute the motive of our remarks, and he questioned that I was speaking because that has to, that had to do with our election year ring campaign. So that's imputing improper motive to members' remarks. So I, I hope that he can clarify. I'd just like to urge members to speak to the point. And secondly, well, Mister Ho was suggesting that members' remarks might have to do with the election. In fact, other members have done the same in the past, and that does not amount to imputing improper motive to members' remarks. And please mind your language because we don't want this to happen again. Stephen Ho? Well, whenever you criticize her, she would just shut up. That's the reason why I spent several minutes to ask, all of us are to go back to the original intention. We should try to improve people's livelihood. All right. We talked about the three amendments, twenty four, twenty eight weeks shortened to twenty four weeks. And also Helena Wong referred to Fernando Zheng, and he suggested a hundred thousand dollars why it was spent. That's because of the basic law restriction. And then I'd like to tell a story. All right, you talk about violence in this council. Where did it come from? That's because Wong Yook Man threw the banana. That's because of the old age of law. What has that got to do with throwing banana? In fact, it has nothing to do with that. In fact, we've been working on that for many years. And we've been struggling very hard for this, and we went all the way to Manpower Panel in order to get it through. So had it got anything to do with the throwing of the foul bomb and so on? Well, in fact, in ensuring success, in fact, there has been a lot of hard work behind closed door, behind the scene. And as I've been saying, in fact, when it comes to pay adjustments, the F T U has been working very hard. And in this council, we are now able to come up with these three CSAs. In fact, they have taken, they have taken advantage of our hard work. And then they are trying to steal the limelight. I think this is immoral. But then it doesn't mean that it's unlawful. So whether or not it succeeds, it would depend on the public's judgment. So it's not about how much you have worked on that matter. Because there are also circumstantial factors which you might take advantage of in order to deceive people. So it's not just about people's performance or what they said. In this council, how eloquent they've been able to speak and spending ten minutes to smear people. You will have to work hard yourself. These are my remarks.
Mister Kenneth Wong, did you indicate your wish to speak?
Yes.
Right, Mister Stephen Ho spoke for twelve minutes only. I thought he would speak for fifteen minutes. Anyway, I'd like to comment on the three amendments and also on the legislative process for this bill in the past few months. On different occasions, according to the government, well, first, let me talk about the legislative process. Instead of referring the bill to the House Committee, what else could be done to go through second and third reading of the bill? Now, if the government has the political will and resolve, then a competent government could go through the first, second, and third reading of the bill on the same day. That's something I've always advocated. If the government has the fortitude, then the bill could just be read three times a day. Instead, the bill was referred to the Panel on Manpower. Now, Secretary, let's take a look at this blue bill. This is really a very short bill for among the number of bills to be passed today. I in fact read all the bills. So I think in the first place, you could have had the bill read for the first, second, and third time in one go. Of course, there is a political price to pay. This is up to your own judgment. But that's the first point I'd like to respond to members. For what means it should be adopted, whether the means are unscrupulous, etc. Of course, that's the first way you can do it. That comes with a price, although. Coming back to the three amendments. The first one is to amend clause fourteen in the proposed new Schedule A. And to amend the reference to year from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty in the proposed Schedule Ten in Clause Fourteen. That's not controversial at all as a technical amendment. The other one, more controversial, it's Clause Six, to amend Clause Six Four in the proposed by deleting the commissioner may by notice published in the Gazette and substituting the electoral may by revolution in the proposed section fourteen eight. In other words, positive vetting and versus negative vetting. We cannot just read this amendment on its own, proposed by the Labor and Welfare Bureau. Say there may be a schedule in this subsidiary legislation, and usually, the bureau chief or the commissioner would be empowered to amend certain figures in the schedule. But this is not absolute. We allow such empowerment on the part of the secretary because we have international agreements and conventions. And Hong Kong is a contracting party, is required to implement the agreement by a certain date. And it is only right for the commissioner or the director to be empowered to make amendments. Second, empowerment is needed to cope with some ad hoc matters, such as prohibition of gathering ban. If amendment is not made in a timely manner, some crises may emerge. That could result in fatalities and hospital admission. That is why we need to empower the commissioner or the director to make amendments to the regulation by way of negative vetting. As part of the duty of the secretary to, for example, comply with international requirements in emergencies. Third scenario is about, say, charging of fees. According to the use of pay principle of recovery of cost, the government would sometimes do that. For example, say, if you want to increase the registration fee for the registrar of companies from twenty to thirty five, it's all right. And as established practices go, it is permissible. The other example is about the tax rate of a certain type of tax, say for the income tax or Or other types of tax, if I want to increase the rate from sixteen point five percent to eighteen percent. Of course, our scrutiny will be needed. We empower the financial secretary to exercise the power under urgent circumstances to amend the tax rate. However. We do not have enabling provisions for the secretary to amend. Or to make amendments. As the normal negative vetting procedure goes. Oh, we're not concerned if you raise the cap from eighty thousand, one hundred thousand dollars, so be it, it's alright. But what about lowering the cap? Is that what the public aspires? Say next year, we may have a financial crisis or there may be other factors. Causing the cap to be lowered to sixty thousand dollars. These are possible scenarios. But Chairman, under normal circumstances. Say. Amendments in the future. Should involve better welfare for the people. Now, on the point of positive vetting versus negative vetting. Of course, we need to keep in mind the powers of this council. Because it's being chipped away bit by bit and that is my view on the amendment. As for. Amendment to clauses, to clause thirteen to increase the cap in the proposed Schedule one A. From thirty six thousand eight hundred and twenty two to eighty thousand dollars, we've heard the comments made by members from both sides. Now, according to the secretary. By raising the cap to eighty thousand dollars. The majority of. I mean, the major brackets of income earners would be covered. So the majority of employees in Hong Kong would be covered. But then I need to ask why not more? Why not increasing the cap further? Now, remember in yesterday's debate, this point was raised. Even if you increase the cap from eighty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars. It will not have any relevance to the birth rate. What it means is that. Expectant mothers and the families. Will enjoy better financial protection so that they are reassured to spend more time with their children. Now, I'd also like to respond to the points made by other members. We've extended the maternity leave period to fourteen weeks. But we should not just stop here. As we are trying to catch up with other advanced economies, we are lagging behind already. They had sixteen weeks, twenty weeks, even over twenty weeks. Many advanced economies. Have similar policies already. Of course, there are fine points we need to debate on, commitment, the government's commitment, the employer's commitment, etc. These are issues that we need to explore in the long run. On this issue of maternity leave. I hope the government can give an undertaking for a review to be conducted within the next three years. And see whether the maternity leave period can be further extended. And in the same vein, in terms of paternity leave, we are again lagging behind other countries. We have only five days of paternity leave. I don't think it offers much help to parents of newborn. Chairman. I hope the secretary could explain to us the following. That is why he suggests that the bill will be withdrawn if the amendment of positive vetting procedure is passed. Because when Matthew Zhang was Secretary for Labor and Welfare. We processed the bill on paternity leave and I was chair of this bills committee and I had the same argument. I wonder if this is the rather unique position adopted by the Labor and Welfare Bureau, that this is an all or nothing tactic. Either you pass the bill in full or the bill will be withdrawn. I don't know whether it's a threat to members, so please, secretary, respond to that. I so submit, Dr. Helena Wong. Chairman. Very briefly, I must say that. Mister Stephen Ho and Mister Ben Chen of the D A B spoke just now. And I believe that they're in breach of the rules of procedure. I need to stage my protest. And whilst you were absent just now, the deputy did not handle the matter fairly. Because R O P forty one bracket four suggests that. It shall be out of order to use offensive and insulting language about members of the council. Men of deputy at the time just allowed them to ramble. Mister Ben Chen claims that I have psychosis, this is really, a really serious allegation. How could he just casually make such a remark in this council? He is so low-handed and I think that he should withdraw his remarks. Mister Stephen Ho. In his speech. Impute improper motives to me. He claimed that I spoke because of the primary election in Saturday, on Saturday. This is in breach of forty one five of the R O P and that a member shall not impute improper motives to another member. So he just made a wild conjecture on the motive of my argument. Why is it that when Mr. Ari Lee is, was taking over the chair? They, she did not do anything about the mischief. Just take a look at Mister Stephen Ho and Mister Ben Chen from D A B, you would know the, what the D A B is about. We're supposed to debate facts here, we're supposed to speak on this bill. And also the amendment proposed at the panel meeting. In scrutinizing the bill, the Democrats rationally and reasonably. Raise questions and propose amendments. Of course, I understand that any proposed amendment should not create a charging effect. But the proper way to go about it, as the established practice goals. Is that if it is agreeable to the government, then there should be a discussion. And the government should move the C S A on behalf of, on our behalf. That has always been the case. Now they just strike down every amendment and with approval of the president, only one amendment could be moved. Mister Ilvin Young also moved ten amendments, in fact. Save for additional maternity leave enjoyed by the female employee to be able to be converted into paternity leave. For the father in question. We support this idea as well, but the amendment was ruled inadmissible. Well, anyway, I want to save time, Chairman, about the allegation of filibustering. This is not the tactic unique to Democrats. The loyalists also filibuster a lot. In fact, recently, they filibustered and put an end to the, to the ban on e-cigarettes bill. So when, when they think fit, they will also deploy the same tactic of filibustering. What about the extradition bill? This is the fourth time you're speaking, Dr. Helena Wong, please come back to the subject. Uh, that's the end of my speech, we're going to support the amendment.
Doctor Kokaki, Chairman. There are two parts to the amendments. The first party is moved by Doctor C K Law. I'm not sure whether this is wholehearted, something wholeheartedly from the administration, I doubt it. Had it not been for Doctor Fernando Zheng insisting on moving an amendment and the administration would not have done it. I think it is the administration that is engaging in filibustering. For decades, the administration has never put it under review. Until the I L O published the guidelines, the government had no option but to follow. Second. It was in twenty eighteen during the period of the policy address that this was brought up for discussion. The government intended to bring this into effect in the year twenty twenty one. And I did move an amendment, but that wasn't endorsed. My proposal was to bring this into immediate effect. Maybe the government has a break of the conscience. Doctor C K Law said that he is seeking to bring this into effect by the end of this year. It's a waste of time to try to claim credit here. The Democrats. Are not. Sitting in the power of corridor, what about the F T U? What about the pro-establishment, pro-establishment members? And they are in the executive council. When. Triple seven, of course, you would like to have another term, maybe it's likely that she's going to be in office for another term. She's the most desirable official in eyes of the C C P. Had it not been for the administration, they wouldn't have raised it in the first place. Doctor Helena Wong. Commented on the level of the D A B, I don't think we should waste any more time, it is plain for everybody what level they are at. I'd like to spend a little more time on the amendment moved by Mister Vincent Cheng. To a certain extent, this is trying to put things right. The government. Has taken away the the powers or the rights they were entitled to. And this is restoring this to the council, maybe this is just for show. Mister Vincent Cheng is, if he is a member, a key member of the pro-establishment members. Then the amendments definitely would be endorsed. They would definitely be able to do it for show. They, they have. This amendment here. On the table, maybe under the table, they have another, another move. Now, this is a member's motion. The F T U, the D A B, if they vote in favor, they will not be able to get it through. Let's hope that this is not for show, let's hope that they are doing this in earnest. And this is something they should do. C K Law was a legal member, he was. Very ferocious when he criticized the administration, now he has switched his role. And he is allowing his butt to dominate his brain. Now, under the N S L, National Security Law, we can't talk about anything. The Commissioner's Office is almighty. They can override everyone, I think we should have the Commissioner's. Commissioner of the Office for Safeguarding National Security to be here, to be in charge of the maternity leave. I think we should have the power restored to the council, C K, you don't have to be worried. You have this twisted council, you have the fossil constituents, you don't have to be worried about the council inserting the power. There is going to be massive amount of disqualification, you can do whatever you like. You can. You can form a council which is formed by Robert Stams. And it's just like a monkey that are acting at your beck and call. You have everyone under your thumb, I mean, you can appoint the judges, please bring yourself back. Yes, yes, I'm bringing myself back in support of Mister Vincent Cheng, I'm just explaining. Why C K Law doesn't have to throw a tantrum like this, I mean, the whole of Hong Kong is under your thumb. Unless you are still in the land of not, that Hong Kong still has separation of three powers. Were you there when the Commissioner's Office was open? Please come back to the subject, yes, I am. The Commissioners for National Security enjoys more power than you. He is the almighty person here, well, this is the final one, if you digress. I better ask the Commissioner next time, I've been not asking you, President Chairman, I'm finishing. We don't want to waste any more time. We are trying to restore the power in order to be fair to the council. I mean, that's being confident that the council, there is still hope for this council. In the context of the National Security Law. We should enjoy the power to decide whether the bill should be subject to positive vetting. This is our duty, where do we get the votes from? The whole government, triple seven, she was returned by a thousand or so people here. We have the, we may have the pro-establishment members, but all of us are returned by one man, by the election. And you throw a tantrum, you, you don't have to be worried, everyone is in the same family. After September, you can decide on Vincent Cheng, Wong Ting Kwong being in. Fernando Zheng or myself, we're out, we're going to be disqualified. So the whole world is under your thumb, don't have to be worried, C K Law, the whole world is yours. The whole of Hong Kong is yours, the Commissioner for National Security is in control of Hong Kong. You don't have to throw a tantrum, let it pass. You have all the different animals, dogs and cats and monkeys being the counselors here, they will be leaping to your defense. Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak? If not, I'd like to invite Mister Vincent Cheng to speak. Doctor Zhang.
I'd like to respond to the pro-establishment members. I have to make it clear that the amendment was moved by me at the panel and it was voted through. And that's why Mister Vincent Cheng is moving this motion. I don't have any intention of imposing this motion on Mister Vincent Cheng. I'm not here to frame him, this is the procedure, how it came about. But the thing is, Mister Vincent Cheng is representing the panel to move this amendment. Such being the case, I am mystified why Mister Michael Look said that this is not. A noble move. He was, he was there, he didn't raise an objection, he didn't. Indicate his support. But here in this council, he said it wasn't right, it wasn't good enough. And he said that we are.
And he said that we are, um, we have hijacked the issue. And, and we're trying to, um, to, to gain the halo here. Um, and I'm not going to, um, run again, I'm not sure what halo I'm trying to get. And these people are bad losers, uh, Mr. Chairman. In the whole process of deliberation, they're not doing what they are supposed to do. And they dare not, um, object to the amendments. These amendments are there for the public, they are positive. You dare not say anything at the panel meeting. Here you have to raise objection because you have to leap to the defense of the, the administration. And CK Law has to hand over a helmet to him. And he is saying that, um, we, we will perish with you if, um, you endorse the amendment. And it seems that you wanna, and you're moral high ground. And it's like, um, the, um, the, the case of King Solomon and, and and it is really ugly, uh, the way they are acting. They can come with remarks like this, and they keep lying and lying. Counselors at this level are really deplorable. Dr. Quoc has got a point there. The pro-establishment members have representatives at the executive council. And you are their ruling coalition. And you're act, you're acting in cahoots with the administration. Here in this council, the Democrats are moving amendments on behalf of the, the public. And this is, um, in line with the due process. This, this has been endorsed at the panel. Otherwise, we don't have, um, to impose upon Mr. Chang to move the amendments. And now you are saying no to these amendments. You're trying to find a way, graceful way out. And you're telling the public that we may be objecting to this better proposal, but we are, uh, for your sake, that we object to the proposal. This is what they're doing. We are bringing pressure, uh, to bear on the government, but they are acting in cahoots with the administration. This is what's happening over the past two decades. And this is the situation in Hong Kong that we find ourselves in. Maybe they consider themselves having sophisticated level. The pro-government members are saying that the Democrats are getting in the way of, um, forming the House Committee. And the Secretary is, um, talented enough, um, to second the House Committee. And eventually, it was through the House Committee that we could come back here. These are procedural matters. And we need to have a procedural, uh, propriety. You keep, uh, pleading about, um, the, the House Committee, um, tussle. Why is it that you cannot get the matter sorted out? Like, um, Mr. Dennis Quoc said, um, they are so lazy, and they're so stupid. They're not attending the meetings, they're not doing anything. They thoroughly could have withdrawn from, uh, running from chairmanship. Please come back to the subject. I'm media responding to them, they, they said that we're getting in the way of, um, the House Committee election. If they're smart enough, we would not be able to do anything to stop the matter. Please speak to the subject, Dr. Zheng. They said that, um, we are being mutually destructive. It is some CK Law that is being mutually destructive. If this, um, motion moved by Mr. Vincent Chang were to be carried, um, he would consider withdrawing the bill and the four additional weeks of maternity leave, um, will not be available to them. Who is going to be destroying the whole thing? They are accusing us, um, of, um, destroying the whole matter.
I think they are distorting the logic. So who has asked the Bureau Director to say this? In this council, members moved, uh, amendments, and then once it's passed, the administration will withdraw the bill. What kind of attitude is that? So do we have to be rubber stem? Is it that, uh, our, the only thing that we can do is to be a rubber stem? That there is no right, that there is no power for us to move any amendment. And if it's passed, then the administration will just burn with us, so that nothing will be passed. So is that the right attitude for those in power? So you will have to call all the shots, uh, and if you manage to move anything or pass anything, then, um, you will just withdraw it. So this is what I mean, to be the destructionist. So you call us, they burn with you, they burn with me. Cam, in fact, it's you who are destroying everything. You're actually pushing Hong Kong over the cliff. So since last year with the NT extradition bill, you've been pushing us, uh, uh, off the cliff. So that's been the approach adopted by the administration. Why do you have to collude with the loyalists? Why do you have to do it in such, um, an ugly manner? So whoever joins the government, apparently the butt would call the short. So we used to have for this, um, CK Law, who was, um, a member, who was, uh, uh, a PhD, and who was, um, a professor. Well, for the Law Chee Kwong that I knew for over twenty years, um, he's not, he's, he was never like that. But then this year, time and again, when I moved the amendment, um, he threatened. Well, last time he was, it was not just threatening, in fact, uh, he actually withdrew it. So that was something that was, um, beneficial to people's livelihood. So this is what I call the burners. This is taking the public as their enemy. It's not what, um, an open society, uh, a free society would have done. So this is a, in a free and open society, but then it's no longer there. So our powers, freedoms, and everything has been eroded and everything is politicized, even if it has to do with people's livelihood. So it's not what I had wanted to say, but then I have no alternative but to respond to the distorted logic, um, uh, advocated by the loyalists. So if you still have some conscience, just, uh, give my amendment a chance so that the power can be a little more balanced. For this council and the administration both to have the power to move some amendments, to amend the cap for the additional MLP, so that we will have a chance to move it, um, in a timely manner. Or else, as you can see, for the ten-week maternity leave. Well, it was, it has not changed for fifty years. And earlier on, I cited two examples, including the fatal accidents, um, compensation, and also the right to, uh, the right to reinstatement. Well, for twenty years, the administration did not listen to us. So if we just leave everything to the administration, if we just, uh, uh, leave it to the government to propose amendments, um, well, this time we have a chance to improve the cap. And, um, if we had left everything to the administration, there is every chance that we would have to wait until the next century before we can do anything at all. So we will have to stand on the side of the public. We will have to agree that we will vote for Vincent Chang's amendment. That is, uh, we will have to go through the positive vetting procedure. Okay, does anyone else, uh, wish to speak? Yes, Mr. Wong Ting Kwong. Thank you, Chairman. Well, nice words, uh, would not cover up lies. Well, Vincent Chang has moved this amendment on behalf of the panel. I do not agree to that. The reason is that, first, um, on the, on the procedures, because the manpower panel. Well, Vincent Chang was elected the chairman, um, later on in the process. And as a result of that, uh, he had, he has to move, um, this amendment on behalf of the panel. But then it doesn't necessarily mean that, uh, it's his own wish to do so. It's not what he has personally advocated. It doesn't mean that his views are identical to that, uh, of the panel. On this particular issue, as a member of this council, we should comprehensively observe what is happening in our society before we come to a wrong decision. As a lawmaker, if we are trying to win the hearts and minds of the public, yes, uh, you might be able to win some credits. Yes, um, you might be able to score some political mileage, then what? But then what's in the interest of the public? That would also cover the grassroots and also the SMEs. I've been saying this. The price that we have to pay. And also this arrangement involves the interests of four quarters of a community, and therefore we will have to discuss and consult one another before we reach a consensus. When the A W B moved the amendment, actually before it did it, um, there was this LAB which was responsible for scrutinizing the relevant proposal. And, um, it was only after a consensus was reached that the administration has come up with this proposal. And also drafted this amendment bill before tabling it, uh, to this council for scrutiny and for passage. So this is what happens, and this is the right procedures. So it's not what, um, lawmaker would determine, okay? Apparently, you're, you're saying that, uh, whatever you say should be passed. So we will have to come clean to the pub, with the public. We should not, um, just, um, say this because we have the power, and then we claim that, uh, we are doing this, um, for the public. So what's meant by the public? Another point about this is about justice, procedural justice. Well, there is, uh, there is nothing called, uh, breaking the law in order to achieve justice. In fact, uh, we do have the, um, rules of procedure and also the standing orders, uh, for every meeting. But then we can't say that, um, well, the rules would be able to cover everything. It's not watertight. Very often there are gray areas, it's inevitable. And here, you're taking advantage of these gray areas to do whatever you want, to manipulate things, to deceive the public. And to manipulate with the procedures, you're directly playing with the procedures in order to achieve whatever motive you might have. Okay, you just, uh, call it public interest. You're using it to package your ulterior motive. And here, how dare you say this? How dare you claim that you're doing this for public interest? As a lawmaker, you have to monitor the performance of the administration so as to improve their governance. But then it's not for you to overthrow the government. What benefits do we get from that? Of course, I understand. Dr. Law Chee Kwong, the Bureau Director, before he joined the government, uh, his stance could have been a little more biased. But then, as soon as he took up his office, if he remained so biased, uh, if he had failed to take into account all factors, uh, how could he have done his job as the Bureau Director? So in this chambers, whoever speaks is not like what you've been doing, that, uh, you would just, uh, be making irresponsible remarks, thinking that, uh, you'd be able to pull wool over the eyes of the public. I think as a representative of the bill, of the panel, um, Mr. Vincent Chang has moved this amendment, and I'd like to say no to this. Thank you. Chairman. I've listened to the debate, uh, for the whole morning. The loyalists have been saying that, uh, the pandas, uh, have moved this amendment. And, um, they are calling us the burners, the burners me cam. And, uh, Fernando Zheng already clarified this. I think there is, um, a pathetic situation with regard to them. The root of the problem is that the S R government didn't even bother to respect this council. Just a little bit, there, there wasn't even just a little bit of respect for this council. Had Vincent Chang been able to move this amendment on behalf of, of the panel, if it's passed, uh, then the administration is threatening that, uh, it would withdraw the entire bill on maternity leave. My question is, this Hong Kong that we have when has it degenerated to a stage whereby you would put the blame on the victim? I'd like to ask the panel that Vincent Chang has represented, and it has moved this amendment, even if it's passed, uh, to what extent? Would it affect the governance by the administration? The only change would be that, um, instead of, uh, doing it by way of a negative vetting procedure, it would have been done by way of a positive vetting procedure. And as said, whether or not, uh, we can have the vet, the positive vetting procedure, it could be proposed, um, by the administration, even if it's to be moved by members, we will have to be restricted, uh, by Basic Law Article seventy-four. In other words, there must not be a charging effect on the government. So the scope of, this, the scope of, um, maneuvering would be very limited. But then it just represents the process in which members will have a chance to be more proactive. So that, uh, for things that could be rejected, uh, well, we would have a chance to move it, uh, that's all. That's how far we can go, and yet you're saying no to this. So this morning, they have spent the whole morning on this, they say that it's all your fault because you are making a mess of everything. But why? Why is that, um, in this council? All the powers are vested in the government and the loyalists and the pro-establishment camp. They have all the official functions and official positions, and they are the majority of this council. And yet how come they have not been able to make the best use of the power that they have to make the government respond to the overall demands by the community so that there can be a solution to all these problems? And all they have done is that they are sitting here as the rubber stem, as the shoe shiners, as the sicko fans. So how can you still claim credit to it? You don't have to be the shoe shiners today, okay? We have the, uh, Office for Safeguarding National Security here. That's because you have not done your job properly. Because obviously, these are issues or problems of the SARG, and yet you have not, um, resorted to resolving the problem. And also the rift between the government and the public, and you have not resolved the problem between the, um, administration and the public. And yet you're making these remarks, and you're just questioning that, uh, for those who raise questions, uh, they are the ones, uh, who are problematic. So what is in your mind? It's very simple. What I say is, how can you, how can we ensure that Hong Kong will still enjoy a high degree of autonomy? The SAR government in the face of the Hong Kong community. In terms of, uh, winning people's hearts and minds, uh, there are many things that the people are not happy with. And yet you do, do not resort to resolve those problems. I don't know where and why these people would have introduced the National Security Law. And then you think that, um, well, that's good to Hong Kong because we'll be able to, um, uh, resolve the social unrest in Hong Kong. Law Chee Kwong, you were once a member of the Democratic Party. As Mr. Wong Ting Kwong said, you were biased in the past. In other words, you were a human, you used to be a human, and you're In other words, you were a human. You used to be a human, and you're no longer a human now. That's because you've taken up the post and therefore your butt replaces your brain.
I am furious. I don't know what is going on. Our society has come to this state. During reunification, we had in our mind high degree of autonomy in Hong Kong. And because of that, one country, two systems could still work. Hong Kong remains a free and open society, and then we can strive for democracy. Please come back to the debate, Mr. Wu Chiu Hua. Yes, I'm doing that. Now, I want to say that what I've heard all along is about this minor amendment that sparked such a big issue. It shows how sick this government is. Because nothing gets in the ear of the government. Everyone becomes a synchrophone of the government. Only the government has a say on anything. According to the Basic Law, we're supposed to monitor the government. And according to the rules of procedure, we could go through certain procedures to air our views. But the government just ignores us. We work in accordance with the rules of procedure. We express our views by moving amendments. And yet, at this stage, you dare to tell us that if the amendment is passed, which is in accordance with the rules of procedure permissible, you will withdraw the bill. This is no difference than saying that we must always say yes to any government bill in the future. Otherwise, you withdraw the bill. If you remain stubborn, then you'll be locked up according to the national security law. If you go against the government, you could be subverting the state power. This is my feeling here. And let me appeal to members. If we still believe that the council could provide an effective platform for the government to resolve social issues, then the powers and rights of members in this council shall be staunchly safeguarded. Don't tell us that we should just believe in the government. The government is doing good for the people. If every government decision is correct, is for the benefit of everyone, then what you need isn't the Legislative Council, but the National People's Congress. Does any other member wish to speak? If not, I invite Mr. Vincent Chang, who has moved the amendment, to speak again and also for the secretaries to reply. The debate will come to a close afterwards. Mr. Vincent Chang.
Thank you, Chairman. I already reported the view of the panel on its behalf. I don't have anything to add. Secretary, anything to add?
Just very briefly. Regarding the amendments moved by Mr. Vincent Chang, on positive vetting procedure, it creates a charging effect. So on behalf of the government, I say that we should abide by the arrangement under Article seventy-four of the Basic Law.
I put a question to the committee now votes on the clauses with no amendment standing part of the bill. That clause is one to five and seven to twelve stand part of the bill. Will those in favor please raise their hands? Mr. Chang claims a division. The bell will ring for five minutes.
Please proceed to vote.
Please check your votes. If there are no questions, voting now ends. I display the results. F C twenty-nine present, nineteen in favor, nine against. G C twenty-nine present, fifteen four, fourteen against. The question is agreed by a majority of each of the two groups of members who are present. I declare the motion passed. For subsequent voting on this bill, the voting will take place one minute after the bell has been rung. Mr. Vincent Chang. Chairman, I move my amendment set out in the appendix. I propose to, I propose to question to you, and that is that Mr. Chang's amendment be passed. Mr. Gary Chen claims division. Bell will ring for one minute.
Please proceed to vote.
Please check your votes. If there are no questions, voting now ends. I display the results. F C thirty present, ten four, nineteen against. G C twenty-nine present, fourteen four, fourteen against, one abstention. The question is negatived by a majority of each of the two groups of members who are present and declared amendment negatived. I now put a question to you, and that is that clause six stand part of the bill. Will those in favor please raise their hands? Mr. Ray Chen claims a division. The bell will ring for one minute.
Please proceed to vote.
Please check your votes. If there are no questions, voting now ends. I display the results. Fifty-eight present, fifty-four four, two against, one abstention. The question is agreed by a majority of the members who are present. I declare the motion passed. Secretary, you may move your amendments. Chairman, I move my amendments are set out in the appendix to the script. I propose to question to you that the secretary's amendments be passed. Will those in favor please raise their hands? Those against? I think the question is agreed by a majority of the members present and declared amendments passed. Clauses thirteen and fourteen as amended. I now put the question to you that the clause-
Please proceed to vote. Please check your votes. If there are no questions, I display the results. Sixty present, fifty-six-four, three abstentions. The question is agreed by majority of the members who are present. I declare the motion passed. Please proceed to vote. Third reading, Employment Amendment Bill 2019. Please check your votes. If there are no questions, voting now ends. I display the results.